Entertain a private meeting with Alderman Bram if he'd like me to go. Oh, there he is.
Chop, chop.
Okay. So, we're back in session. It's, for the record, 9:33. I'm calling it City Council 101. And really what this was, and I've been wanting to do this almost for 10 years since I was the new Alderman who got on the council. If you've ever, if you've never been through the city process, if you've never been an elected official, a lot of stuff we do up here, it takes you a while to learn it, but there is a method to the madness that goes on here. And I think it's important that people understand, and this, by the way, this document will be available on Board Docs. I think it's important for people to understand the work that we do up here, but probably more important than that is, and some of the folks are patiently still sitting here in the audience, is one of the things that I find most frustrating as an elected official, and everybody here has seen it, is when we are voting on something at City Council, and it is finally, it has gotten to the press, and the press says, you know, "We're going to vote on it." And you'll see maybe some social media, and what happens is, people will come to City Council, and they'll start speaking out at public forum, which is their right to do, but they're speaking on an item that's been before committee for six months. And I know that those people are frustrated who come for the first time because they don't feel like their voices are being heard. So hopefully, in laying out the City Council 101, people get a better understanding of how to better communicate with their elected officials and with city staff. And that's really the whole purpose of this. See if this is working. Okay. I think we all know this, but City of Elmhurst was incorporated in 1882. We have about 44,000 in the interest of time. I'm not going to go over everything on every slide. But we have about 44,000 residents in town, and we are a town with wards. So not, a lot of the stuff we vote on is citywide, but the individual Aldermen are elected by ward, representing approximately 1/7th of wards. We have seven wards, approximately 1/7th of the population. We reset after every census. We are a city manager form of government, and depending on what I talk about now, we'll skip slides later. City manager form of government is one of five municipal governments that is allowed by Illinois law. Another one you might be, and by the way, the city manager form of government is the most prevalent in the city, in the state of Illinois. Another one you might be familiar with is mayor council form. And that best example would be Chicago, where you have full-time, what I'll call full-time politicians that, that work on city operations as well. There's also, you know, commission and town meeting forms, but we're a city manager form of government. Basically what that means is, we're an elected body, but we hire an official CEO, the gentleman sitting to my right, to help run the day-to-day operations. Real quick, here's most of the folks that, if you come to City Hall, you'll interact with if you're dealing with elected officials. You see the mayor, city clerk, and treasurer. We all have four-year terms. And then we have the 14 Aldermen that have four-year terms as well, but they stagger within each ward. So there's a four-year term, but within the ward, every two years, an Alderman is up for election. That's something I like to tell people if and when they have an issue with how the government's being run. Every two years, 50% of the City Council is up for review by the residents of Elmhurst. I think that's important for people to understand. This is an org chart that's on the city, that's on the city website, and it's also posted downstairs, but I want to highlight just one thing here. This is basically an org chart for the city of Elmhurst. And you have City Manager Gorbowski here, we talked about him earlier, and then Assistant City Manager Mike Kopp. And these are all the departments. What I want to focus on is here. These are the elected officials. And when I first became an elected official, while I was interested in rolling up my sleeves and digging in, I had a tough time understanding where I fit within this world. This right here, all these elected officials, they're all residents of Elmhurst. And with ward politics, they're equally distributed geographically around Elmhurst. It is the role of, and here's who's in charge overall, the residents. They're at the top of the food chain, so to speak. And then all these elected officials actually are kind of the liaison between the residents and city staff. That's really what we're here for, in addition to being a legislative body. I just mentioned it. City Council really acts, the best example I can get, it's analogous to Congress, your U.S. Congress. The folks in front of you are a legislative body. We're a city manager form of government that we legislate, but we allow staff to run the city. What's the role of the mayor? That's my job. Really, the biggest difference, and I've done both between Alderman and mayor, is when you're an Alderman, you're really focused internally in Elmhurst. So as that shifts, even though I'm an elected official within the city of Elmhurst, there's a couple of things that differ between being an Alderman and being a mayor. One is, you have to run a meeting, which you saw tonight was an interesting one to run. In addition, unlike a lot of the Aldermen, I actually look outside of the borders of Elmhurst. I meet with community leaders inside and outside of Elmhurst. I meet with developers who want to come in and pitch. I meet with our congressmen on a pretty regular basis, Chairman Cronin, a whole bunch of other folks. And unlike most mayors in the state, I'm actually very limited in my role legislatively. Technically, I'm considered a weak mayor. City clerk, the biggest responsibility, the city clerk is to maintain a complete and permanent history of all the stuff that we do. And she does a wonderful job.
Thank you, Mayor.
City treasurer is charged with the responsibility for the custody of all city funds, and the dispersment of said funds as they may be approved by the City Council. And she does a wonderful job as well. Aldermen. Okay. So what I want to say about the Aldermen, and I kind of mentioned that we're ward politics, but the other thing I want to mention is that we have 14 Aldermen here in the city of Elmhurst, and how abnormal that actually is in the state of Illinois. The only other municipality that has a larger body of elected Aldermen is the city of Elmhurst. I'm sorry, the city of Chicago. City of Chicago has 50 Aldermen. The running joke is 51 if you include the mayor of Bensonville. Should I have said that? It's a little late. Sorry. It's a little punchy. I'm about 20 minutes to 10. Anywho, the city of Chicago has 50 Aldermen. City of Elmhurst has 14. There's only other, one other elected body, West Chicago, has 14 Aldermen. That is not a normal amount. Most elected bodies, like Naperville, for example, is four times the size of Elmhurst, they have eight City Council members and a mayor. Burridge, six trustees and a mayor. What you'll normally find is an odd number, so that they don't get hung up on votes. But what I like to say, the best thing about 14 Aldermen is, it does make neighborhood politics. Talk to any Alderman who's been an Alderman for more than two years, and you'd be surprised at how well you get to know your neighborhood. And I think while it takes us a long time sometimes to get things done and get all of us to have our opinions voiced, we do a great job in liaison with our residents, and their voices are readily heard. One of the best things, and this is for folks in the audience and anybody who's going to watch this on TV, one of the best things that folks can do if they have any issues with the city is, first and foremost, you're always welcome to call the city. Call our main number, 530-3000. And you'd be surprised how quickly you can get an answer, whether it's, "Did my garbage pickup day move?" Or, "When is all-day garbage pickup?" Or, "Is there a recycling event?" But the other way, independent of going online, is really getting to know your elected official. And if you go onto our city website, and that's really where we direct a lot of people, not because we don't want to talk to folks, but because we think it's the most efficient way for them to get information. We have a host of, the vast majority of what we do is online. In fact, we have a, we win a sunshine award every year for the amount of information that we put, including our budget, among other things, online. But the other thing you can do online is you can write an email to not only your, to the mayor or your elected officials, but there is contact information for your elected officials on there. I mentioned this, we have a vast array of communication methods within the city. We actually have a full communications department. Couple of things that I think are important to note, not only can you go online and get this stuff, but if you poke around on our city website, you can actually sign up for what I'll call in the marketing world, are push notifications. So you can actually go through a decision tree and give us your email, or even give us your phone number, and we can send you texts, or we can send you push notifications based on your preferences. So if you're interested in parades or what's happening, there's a certain button you can click. Or if you're interested specifically in news alerts, there's another button you can push. So I encourage everybody to go on the city website, anybody who has any questions. The quicker you familiarize yourself, the better you familiarize yourself with our city website, the quicker you can get answers. Not that we're not happy to talk to you, but there is so much information out there. The quicker, the better you understand how we communicate, the better you can get your information. In addition to what's online, we publish the front portion, send that out, and the city has a pretty robust social media footprint with Twitter, Facebook, among other stuff. City manager form of government, I've already gone over that. That's basically, we hire a professional CEO to run the city. We also, in the last five years, hired an assistant city manager. That's not uncommon for a town of our size. We, depending on what our capital projects are for the year, the city of Elmhurst is anywhere between 120 and $140 million corporation. That's a pretty big deal, so we want some pretty smart people to help run it for us. We're also very fortunate that in the last 35 years, we've only had two city managers. So we have a lot of institutional knowledge and not a lot of handoff. City Council meetings, most are aware, but we have City Council meetings on the first and third Monday of every month. There are occasions where we'll have special meetings. The only time that's happened in the 10 years I've been here is when we've had to grind through some budgets, and we've scheduled some additional meetings on fifth Mondays for that. You'll see this mention about Open Meetings Act, but the City Council agenda is actually posted online for all to review on Thursday. That's actually earlier than it needs to. Technically, it's 48 hours before the meeting, according to the Open Meetings Act by the state of Illinois. We post them on Thursday to try to give people as much time as possible to review, but it also, if something comes up on a Friday, we're able to add it. For us to actually hold our meetings, we need a quorum. Of the elected officials who are up here, technically 15 of us vote. I vote when there's ties. For us to actually hold a meeting, we need eight Aldermen, which is a quorum. We usually don't have a problem meeting that, but we can actually hold a meeting and pass laws and ordinances and the required stuff that we do with as little as eight Aldermen. The City Council is governed by Roberts Rules. I'll get into that a little bit later, but when you're running a meeting this size, it's the same Roberts Rules that the House of Representatives runs down in Springfield and Senate, and not only, and also your federal government. Some of this stuff is pretty obvious, but we do follow, the city, the city does follow the Open Meetings Act. Basically, what the Open Meetings Act, do I have it next? I'll go into that next. Okay. So we have Roberts Rules, and if you've, if you're not familiar with Roberts Rules, it can be a little goofy, but basically Brigadier General Robert, I think it's maybe Gerard Robert, in 1987 wrote Roberts Rules. He, 1887. 1987, this is quite a big book. 1887, he had, was expressing frustration, he was in the U.S. Army, was expressing frustration as to how to, how to run a good meeting. And without running a good meeting, you're not going to get anything done. So the vast majority of the elected bodies in the United States use Roberts Rules. Well, Mr. Robert started them in 1887. What's interesting, a little trivia nugget, his family still owns the company, and they still revise the rules. All 648 pages that we are supposed to follow up here. It's really a formality of parliamentary procedure, which for all those paying attention at home, goes all the way back to Roman times, but this actually codifies it a little bit. So we run with Roberts Rules. Anything that's not defined in our code, we default to Roberts Rules. And I'll get into that in just a little bit. Open Meetings Act in general, basically what the Open Meetings Act is, is, the state of Illinois says that we're not allowed to hold meetings in private, and we're not allowed to make decisions about taxpayers and their laws and their dollars without letting them know. So not only can we not have these meetings in private, we need to post and give enough time, a set time in advance, which I mentioned, so those folks can, not only do we have to have them in public, and we have to post what's going on, we also have to give those folks the right to attend in public. You saw that in spades here this evening. One of the things, another tool that we have, and this really has changed in the last 10 years since I've been on the council. When I first got on the council 10 years ago, and a lot of us here, Alderman Mullenar can do a test, you used to get a packet about this thick full of printed material, and nothing was online. Now really, our Board Docs is basically our suppository of all of our notes, all of our meetings.
Suppository.
Suppository? Repository.
It was a suppository before.
Good lord. I think we're going to call a timeout and slow down a little bit. Repository?
Sure. Can you think of a suppository?
I was hoping to get a smile out of Alderman Mullenar on that one. It is a repository for all of our documentation. Trust me. Now, there are a few exceptions to the Open Meetings Act as to when we can go into what I'll call, what we call executive session, or closed-door meeting. There's actually 34 different little variations of reasons where we can go into executive session, but they really break down into three categories, and there are variations under each one. One of them is discussing employment. So if we're in a Congress, if we're in a negotiation with a union, and I think these are pretty obvious, if a union's negotiating one salary and we're negotiating another salary, and the city manager wants to talk to us about how the negotiations are going, it's not something you're going to do in public. It'd be like trying to buy a house and letting them know what your bottom line is, which leads us into the next one. When it comes to sale or purchase of property, for obvious reasons, we do that behind closed doors. And finally, same thing, same obvious litmus test, if we have any pending litigation or in the middle of litigation, we will go into executive session. Now, one thing I will say is that this council is hypersensitive to executive session and hypersensitive to closed-door meetings. We have our city attorney sit down on every single executive session that we do have. I can give you an example. Four years ago, we were in an executive session, and we were talking about the sale of a piece of property. And a few of us, and I was in the meeting as well, a few of us opined, "Yeah, I think it's a good idea to sell the property. I think it's a good idea to sell the property." Someone complained, and you can do that. You can appeal to the PAC office, which is ultimately run by Lisa Madigan, and you can appeal and say, "I don't think what they discussed in open, in closed session was appropriate." What's important to know is that the PAC office said, "Yeah, maybe you shouldn't have done it." The infraction we had is when we said, "Yeah, I think we should sell the property," we didn't say, "I think we should sell it for X amount." To give you an idea of how nuanced that kind of razor's edge that we walk on. But ever since that time, we really rely on the city attorney, Storino, to make sure we stay out of the weeds on that. But those are rare exceptions of when we go into executive session. Here is the slide for the repository. This is available online, and we actually go all the way back to 2013. So if you need anything, you can go on here first. Doesn't mean you can't FOIA the documents, but what we really try to do as a city is put as much information as we can online so that people can access it without going through the formality of a FOIA request. Talk a little bit about council rules of order and how we follow, and tonight was a good example of what's on, really any council meeting, how the agenda's set up. But basically, we kick off the meeting, and I run the meeting. If I'm not here, city clerk starts the meeting, and then we'll work with the elected officials who are present to elect a mayor pro temp for the evening. We have a consent agenda. This is something I'd like to point out. A lot of people don't understand what that is, but according to our city code, a lot of the stuff that we do has to be approved by, according to our code and according to our ordinances, a lot of stuff we have to do has to be approved by council. So whether it's our accounts payable, minutes, committee appointments, purchasing, approval of members of commission, the state of Illinois actually created this consent agenda a million years ago. And what it is, it allows elected bodies like ourselves to be efficient when it comes to officially approving stuff that doesn't necessarily need conversation. So if Alderman Kennedy's committee, which is four people on, did a bidding process for dump trucks, and you can publish that there's three dump trucks there, and they pick the lowest bid, unless there's a major question out there, that's the kind of stuff that goes on consent agenda and passes. Preservation of order, tonight was an interesting example, but basically, as the presiding officer, I have the ability to not only run the meeting but preserve order. We haven't really had this issue in my 10 years on the council, but technically, we can have people removed if they don't follow the rules that we ask them to follow here. Points of order, this is what you'll see, if anybody questions what's going on with Roberts Rules, and a lot of times you'll see Aldermen ask a question, whether or not a certain motion is in order, or, and when points of order come up, it's a specific parliamentary question. It appeals to the chair, and the chairman makes a ruling. I think Don's technically the parliamentarian according to our zoning law, and sometimes I'll coordinate with Don Storino. But back to Roberts Rules, there's a 600-page book, and then there's a bunch of little, like, Cliff Notes on them that we really follow. I also lean on council members who've been here for a bit to help me get through some Addressing the council, this is a good one. We saw it tonight, both addressing the council in public forum. There's certain members in, listed in our council, listed in our zoning, I'm sorry, listed in our ordinances, that are allowed to address the council really at any time as long as I recognize them, whether it's the city manager, city attorney, city treasurer. Not everybody can address the city council, but on occasion, let's say we're doing a, we're issuing a bond, and our agent who is issuing the bond is sitting in the audience if someone has a specific question, what we'll do is, we will call for a motion to allow someone to address the council. So that's an occasion where someone who's not on the list would address the council. We have public forum, you saw that there, saw that this evening. We do that at the beginning of every meeting. Public forum really is a time for people to voice anything that we want to hear. It's not a Q and A. We do ask people to keep it to three minutes. As chairman, I'm allowed to give leeway. Certainly when someone's talking about a loved one or someone who's passed away, I'm not going to cut them off in the middle. But it's worked pretty well, and the good news is that the residents of Elmhurst and the folks that come to speak do have a lot of respect for what we do up here this evening, and they show that respect by following the, some of the ordinances we ask them to follow. Executive session, we've already covered that. Motions, this is pretty straightforward stuff. For anything to be discussed before council, it must be put before us. To do that, we need two folks for a motion. In addition, we can amend motions, so a lot of times if there's a report coming out and you want to spend $35,000, a simple motion would be to make an amendment to spend only $30,000, and then council. To do that, you have to amend the motion and put it before us on the floor. Voice vote versus roll call, just a real quick delineation on this one. Voice vote is what we did actually when we adjourned about 15 minutes ago to take a bathroom break. It's a procedural move that's done so that I can get everyone's approval to do something. You don't see a lot of voice votes except for just procedural stuff. Roll call votes are really, give the Alderman an opportunity to vote individually and allows the other Aldermen and the public to know where they stand on any individual motion that they're voting on. Committee meetings, so we have, the first and third Monday of the month are council meetings, second and fourth Monday are committee. So all the Aldermen that you see up here spend a minimum of four Mondays a month working on city business. Probably the most important thing I want to point out as it relates to committee meetings, and some of the folks in the audience know this, committee meetings are run under a similar format of Roberts Rules. However, it's a much more intimate situation. You're in a smaller room, conversation's a little bit freer, and quite frankly, this is probably the biggest reason I wanted to have this meeting tonight, is committee meetings are really the best opportunity for the residents not only to voice their opinion while decisions are being made, but it's also for the residents to understand the thinking that goes behind reports that come out of committee. So it's probably the, if and when you have your druthers, I recommend folks, if there's something that's on the list that you're interested in, go to the committee meetings first, talk to the individual Alderman. That's the best way not only to get your vote heard, but to get an understanding of how the Aldermen are thinking on a specific issue. As you saw tonight, the mayor appoints the individual committees. Page am I on here? 26?
Yes.
Just to keep my notes. I appoint the committees. One thing of note as it relates to the Open Meeting Act, and we'll go to the next one here. What page am I on? Oh, things changed. Oh no, this is it. Oh, sorry. Apologize. We have four committees. We have Public Works and Building that has four members. We have Public Affairs that has three. We have Finance that has four, and we have DP and Z that has three. One of the things that is important for folks to understand is, for any meeting to run properly, not only a council meeting but also a committee meeting, you need a quorum. So in the case of, let's say, DP and Z, they have three members, they can actually hold a meeting with two people. However, the other thing that's important to understand as it relates to quarums is, due to the Open Meetings Act in the state of Illinois, a majority of a quorum is not allowed to discuss city business outside of a public meeting. I want to state that again. A majority of a quorum is not allowed to discuss city business outside of a public meeting. What does that really mean? What that means is, our individual committee members can't talk to each other about pending business before their committees outside of a public meeting. That's, my city manager has a good saying, "There is a cost for transparency," which is fine, "but it's time and money." It just slows things down. So if the committees only meet every two weeks, in the case of the Public Affairs Committee, Alderman Plomsky and Alderman Levin can't discuss what's before them unless they're in a public meeting. So that does provide some challenges. One of the ways that the committees can be productive between meetings is that the individual committee members can have individual conversations with staff, and information can be disseminated that way. Public Works Committee, just real quick, Chairman Kennedy, this is basically our infrastructure. They've been working on flooding and flood mitigation, but they also work on storm sewer, streets, bridges, sidewalks, stuff like that. Every committee has a staff liaison. So not only are the council members there, but there's at least one or two staff members who assist council members, not only in providing them the information, but since these committees are working committees, they take down requests that Aldermen have and then get back to them with information. That's another thing important to understand, is I would say, maybe a half to two-thirds of the information and stuff that is discussed before committees is usually before committees for at least two meetings. Again, which is why I recommend that folks go to their committee meetings and have their voices heard. Public Affairs and Safety, that's really police and fire. In addition, in the last, I'd say, three, four years, we've really added to their responsibilities. They include the museum, but very important is, especially with the new technology out there, is our communications manager, Cassandra, who helps us do all of this communication that we're talking about tonight. Finance and Council Affairs does exactly what you would think. A couple of the big things they do is, they do levies. They set our levy every year, or at least recommendations of our levy every year. They also set a lot of our fees, whether it's parking stickers, or water, or sewer, and stuff like that. DP and Z is also what it sounds like. In Elmhurst, we have, over the past couple of years, we have almost $200 million in development. This is, as any Alderman who's been on it will attest, can be a sticky committee to be on. A lot of times, as you'll see this evening, there's someone who wants to do something and someone who doesn't, and you do your best to evaluate the, evaluate the application that's before you. Assistant City Manager Kopp, who handles a lot of our development, and also Thanh Werner, are the staff liaisons for DP and Z. Werner, are the staff liaisons for DP and Z. Little bit about how committees work. For a committee to work on something, they get a referral. For those of you my age, or maybe a little older, you'll remember Schoolhouse Rock, where they said, "I'm just a bill, I'm only a bill, this is it." But in Elmhurst, it's, "I'm a referral, I'm just a referral." So, what you do, and this is really where ward politics comes into play. If you have an issue with your ward, or someone contacts you, a lot of committee referrals actually come from the public, through their elected officials. So, it takes two officials to write up a referral and send it to council. Let's see if I got a better slide for this, instead of going through it this way. There we go. That's a little better. And we're almost getting to the end, Patty, I promise. Couple things on committees. So, we have committee reports, that's usually when a committee is finished, evaluating a referral, and they're going to send it up to council for a vote. Another thing that occasionally you will see is a majority versus a minority report. So, not everyone on this council is expected to agree all the time. A lot of times, I would say about eighty-five percent of the time, the decisions that we are asked to make are pretty logical, and we're all presented with the same information, we all come with the same conclusion. But there are times where council members will differ within a committee, and there's really two ways you can handle it. One is, a council member can refuse to sign a report. That's fine. So, let's say, in the instance of Public Works, you might have three people on that committee who will sign a report, and one that won't. And depending on how strong, or the actual nuance of why that person's objecting to the committee, committee recommendation, they can either choose, do not sign the report and vote no, or, depending on what's being decided, they can actually write a minority report. So, let's just say, somebody comes before Finance, and they want a fifty-thousand-dollar A person can object to that and not sign the report, and when they come to city council, they can make a case for not supporting the report. Or, they can agree with the committee that they want to provide some sort of incentive to this person who needs fifty thousand dollars, but they only think that person should get twenty-five thousand. In a case like that, depending on how strongly the alderman feels about that opinion, they can write a minority report, and council gets the opportunity during council meeting to substitute the minority for the majority. Here's a real quick flow chart on how the referral process goes, and issues identified by an alderman. We recently changed our code, I say recently, probably about two or three years ago, where we require now two aldermen to be on a referral. That referral gets put on the agenda before us. One thing that's important on this is, it gets put on the council agenda, and it's not debatable. And that's kind of a Robert's Rules thing. But what that means by not debatable, doesn't mean it's not a good idea, but what you don't want to do is put up a referral, and before you have any opportunity to dig into any of the facts, you don't want to have a debate up on the council. What is debatable is whether or not it's a proper referral. So, if somebody puts in a referral that says that we should only employ automatic window washers for all buildings over a hundred stories, well, that's, that would be debate, the debate of whether or not that's an appropriate referral is something that we could discuss, because we don't have any hundred-story buildings in Elmhurst. It's really not an appropriate referral. But if somebody says, "I think the lights in Elmhurst should shut off at ten o'clock at night," and that's the referral, it's really not debatable. It's only a question of whether or not it's an appropriate referral. If you want to talk about whether it's safe to turn them off, or safe to turn them on, or you want to keep them on for a different amount of time, that conversation happens when that referral comes back out of committee with a report. Committee debates the issue, and issues a report, the report goes to city council. God willing, that report goes before the council, and will be voted on sometimes, as happened tonight, and does happen on occasion. Information will present itself between the time the committee has made a report, and the time the council's going to vote, that may necessitate something different to happen. If the report is approved, two weeks later, city will issue either zoning ordinance, a regular ordinance, or a resolution, and they kind of speak for themselves. A zoning ordinance is something where, let's say, we change the lot coverage for us, or a good example would be the hospital at the south end of town. We actually changed the entire zoning area down there. That would be an example of a zoning ordinance, a regular ordinance. Might be, we changed the day, the hours that you could sell liquor in town. That would be a regular ordinance. And then a resolution would be, if we buy that dump truck Alderman Kennedy always wants us to buy, that would be designated in a referral, a resolution by the next meeting. Wrapping up here, we also do have, at least by this count, fourteen boards and commissions in the city of Elmhurst. The one that I will point out is, should be on there, zoning and planning commissions, the last one on the list. That's actually a separate commission that actually has some independent authority on its own. Here's a real quick example. Zoning and Planning Commission actually has some final authority decision-making ability on some variations that, on fence heights, yard setbacks, stuff like that. That's stuff that they can actually decide on their own, without coming to council. But what really zoning and planning does, and we're unique in this sense, as it relates to elected bodies, but when something goes before zoning and planning, a lot of times it's a referral coming out of our DP and Z committee. It's approved by council to be referred to our zoning and planning commission, and that's really where a lot of the public forum is held on an item. It actually makes a round trip back to the zoning, Development Planning and Zoning Committee for further discussion, and then ultimately, a report is issued onto the city council. Alderman Plumsky.
I just wanted to know if I could-
Absolutely.
...ask a question about zoning planning. I heard from quite a few residents, and maybe many of us have, with the downtown planning and some of the more recent cases, where I think people have some questions about coming to speak, or submitting information when it's for the record, or not for the record, and that, just try to convey to people that there might be limitations on zoning and planning, but you can always still communicate with an alderman or city-
You can always communicate with an alderman, and you can also always come to any meeting. So, that's a good question, as it relates to downtown plan. So, in the case of what the zoning and planning commission will review, they can review, they, information gets before them to review really in two ways. One, a private person can come in and say, "I want to put it in a drive-through," and that's a conditional use. And they actually start at the zoning and planning commission, and they make their case there, and they have a public forum, and then it gets to DP and Z. Or, sometimes, the change, or the requested change can come from city council. In the case of what you're referring to, it would be the downtown plan, or the, what were you calling it? Sorry.
The zoning changes for the-
The zoning changes for the comprehensive plan that we just talked about. That would be something where, let's just say it's building height, for example. Staff would come to the zoning and planning commission, DP and Z, I'm sorry, staff would come to the DP and Z committee, and say, "Based on our planning, and based on public input, et cetera, et cetera, and based on the adoption of the downtown plan, we think the height in downtown should be increased from forty feet to forty-one feet," for example. In that case, people are more than welcome to come and talk during that, but what's going to happen is, the DP and Z committee is actually going to write, technically write a referral that ends up going to the zoning and planning commission. So, when it comes to zoning and planning changes, there can be as many as five or six individual meetings that folks will have an opportunity to talk about. I know it's a little confusing at ten fifteen at night. Okay, so, the last thing I'm going to say is that there are some other elected bodies in town and around town that affect what we do here. But what I will say is, as the city, we kind of become the catch-all on a lot of these conversations. I can tell you what I do and what staff does. If it's a simple answer, when somebody calls and asks a question about the Park District or the School Board, I'm happy to provide it to them. But really, beyond that, I really don't like to step into these folks. They have a similar job to us, but a whole different set of parameters, and it's, it's very detailed, much like what we do here. So, but in the city, we get a lot of these questions, and what I ultimately do is, I refer them to the individual folks on these separate elected boards. I'll refer them to Jim Rogers at the Park District, or Dave Moore at the School District, or the individual elected board members. And that is a snapshot of City Council 101. Probably would've gone over better at eight-thirty than ten fifteen. But this magnificent document is going to be on Board Docs starting tomorrow. Alderman Mulliner.
Just want to make a comment about elected bodies. There, forty percent of the seventh ward has additional two school districts. Salt Creek School District and Willowbrook District Eighty-Eight also are part of Elmhurst. So, forty percent of our ward is in a different school district.
Okay. Alderman Bram.
I just want, excuse me, I just wanted to touch on, or, Mr. Mayor, if you want to touch on, the library board as well, and how that intertwines with the city of Elmhurst.
Okay, so, the library board. Actually, the library is, the library board is appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent from the council. Technically, the library is a department of the city. We have a department head there, Mary Beth-
Harper.
Harper, apologize. Recently got married. Mary Beth Harper is our department head there. What's interesting as to how the library works, and this is just set down by state statute, but we get to appoint the library board, but they really, in terms of their budgeting, they're autonomous. So, they get to vote independently on their budget every year, and by, interestingly enough, even though they're a department of the city, by state law, any budget that they vote on and approve, we have to approve. So, good point, Alderman Bram. But, and they also clearly have a board, and they have open meetings, and you're more than welcome to attend there. All meetings in the city are posted online. In fact, we post our entire schedule in January for all city council meetings and committee meetings, occasionally due to attendance, whether it's around spring break, or sometimes, there'll be some changes, but we post that stuff immediately, certainly before the meetings. Any questions or comments? I appreciate your indulgence as I go through that. The best thing I can say for anybody who's watching, or anybody who's watching this meeting at a later time, is, call City Hall, don't be afraid to call City Hall for simple answers. If you have any answer at all, any question at all, that you think is even remotely complex, you've got seventeen elected officials up here. Our contact information is on the website. All of the aldermen up here, and clerk and treasurer, are dedicated folks who basically do this for a nominal fee. If you, if you average it out, everyone up here gets paid less than minimum wage for the token amount that they receive. But they're all dedicated, and are happy to take your calls. So, that's it. Any questions? Any other questions? And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. motion by Alderman Deuter, second by Alderman Bram. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.